Good evening. The May 18, 2023 meeting of the Woodbridge Township Board of Education will now come to order. Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Here.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Here.
Mr. Harris.
Here.
Ms. Perez.
Here.
Mr. Sedana.
Here.
Mr. Treeblosser.
Here.
Mr. Velez.
Here.
And Mr. Molnar.
Here.
Mr. Secretary, as required by the Sunshine Law, please read the notice of meetings.
Thank you, Mr. President. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend meeting the meetings of public bodies in which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place there posted as follows: On January 11, 2023, emailed to the Home News Tribune, Star Ledger, and the Municipal Clerk's Office, posted in Ross Street School #11, and the Board of Education Administration Building, also published on the school district website.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Harris, can you please read the closed session statement?
Sure. In compliance with the Sunshine Law, the Board must go into closed session in order to discuss subjects exempted from the public portion of our meeting. The discussions to be held in closed session will be regarding personnel matters, and the Board will receive attorney-client advice. Any information regarding the closed session discussion will be released to the public when the reasons for discussing these matters in closed session no longer exist.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. I have a motion by Mr. Harris. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Anderson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The Board will now go into closed session. Do I have a motion to reconvene?
So, motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Treeblosser, second by Mr. De La Pietro. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Here.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Here.
Mr. Harris.
Here.
Ms. Perez. Here.
Mr. Sedana.
Here.
Mr. Treeblosser.
Here.
Mr. Velez.
Here.
And Mr. Molnar.
Here. Okay. Mr. Secretary, please state for the record any notice of bids received.
Thank you. Mr. President, for the 2023-2024 school year, we opened the following bids: On May 9, 2023, IFB 24-03, physical education supplies; On May 16, 2023, IFB 2404, electrical supplies; On May 16, 2023, IFB 2405, plumbing supplies; On May 16, 2023, IFB 24-06, carpentry supplies; And on May 17, 2023, IFB 2407, boiler maintenance.
Thank you. Dr. Massimino, please state for the record the superintendent's reports for the month of April 2023.
Mr. President, I present the following month's reports: Student registers and fire drill reports, suspension reports for elementary and secondary schools, bomb threat reports, and reports for the attendance officers.
Thank you. Dr. Massimino, will you please take this opportunity to introduce our student representative tonight, Alyssa Sefeli?
Alyssa Sefeli is a member of the Colonial High School graduating class of 2024. Alyssa has challenged herself with the Litany of Honor and college-level courses. Alyssa's transcript boasts a 3.9 GPA, five AP courses, and currently she's obtaining college credit from Middlesex County College in a dual enrollment Spanish IV course at Colonial High School. She's a member of the National Honor Society and Spanish Honor Society. In her free time, Alyssa works as a counselor at the Evergreen Center in Colonial where she oversees the middle school students who visit the facility. Alyssa's academic diligence is coupled with her passion for theater. She started her performance career at Colonial High School playing Wednesday Addams in the Addams Family Musical. Alyssa has also shown her comedic and dramatic abilities playing Susan in Funeral Parlor and Miss Scarlet in Clue onstage. Most recently, Alyssa played Natalie Haller/Ed in Colonial's production of All Shook Up, for which she earned a Best Actress nomination for the Central Jersey Theater Marquee Awards sponsored by the Carteret Performing Arts Center. In addition, Alyssa received top scores for musical theater performance at the Middlesex County Teen Arts Festival and has advanced to the state competition on May 31. Her accolades onstage have also earned her the position of Secretary of Colonial High School's Despian Society. Additionally, she performs regularly outside of school with the Aspire Pack in Wayne, New Jersey. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you, Dr. Massimino. Thank you all for inviting me here this evening. I'm going to start with school one. For autism awareness, they celebrated all throughout the month. For their DEI Tacky Tourist Day, students and staff wore their vacation clothes in preparation of spring break. CBL Project Student Council members are being trained on using iMessages to reduce conflict and encourage students to talk things out. DEI members attending attended a peer mediation training. Woodbridge Middle School's sidekicks visited the upper hall students. The New Jersey State Police Marine Service Bureau did a presentation on water safety. Grades four and five volunteered to pick up trash at school as part of the Slam Dunk the Junk. PTO held two fundraisers, one candy bar bingo and the other at Diitalia. At school four and five, students and staff participated in Bubbles for Autism. Students earned lunch with the principal in April. Author Carmen Rubin visited their school. They also participated in the Lead You program. They will have a spring concert at the end of May. The Honor Society students performed at St. Joseph's Senior Home. The Grade One Reading Celebration will be held on May 25. And students will present their projects at the Woodbridge Township School District DEI Showcase on May 31. At school 21, during their week of acceptance for autism awareness, student council organized a student-wide bubble event. Various spirit days were held to help students understand autism. Students created their very own t-shirt pictures to show how they are unique. The buddy class activity focused on April's theme, acceptance. Student council reps made gift bags and wrote notes for the Woodbridge Township Police Officers for Police Appreciation Week. Currently, the community project Best of the Bucket fillers is underway. The National Elementary Honor Society Ceremony was held during mid-May, as well as their chorus and band concerts. The Grade Five Chorus will visit and perform at the Evergreen Senior Center. Student presenters are working very hard to practice for the WTSD DEI Showcase on May 31. At school 22, sidekicks return to the fourth grade classrooms, dare return to the fifth grade classrooms. Women's History Month was celebrated throughout the month of March. The National Elementary Honor Society induction took place on March 15. Their DEI community project titled Paw Pals will be presented by students at the district showcase on May 31. Autism Acceptance was celebrated throughout the month of April. Grades K through 2 participated in the Family Language Arts Program. Grades 1 and 5 participated in the Family Math Program. Grades 3 and 4 participated in the Family STEM Program. At school 23, students participated in the Bubble for Autism Awareness and the Autism Bracelet fundraiser. The choir and band performed at Avonel Middle School for their spring concert and art show. The chess club held their first tournament. The Woodbine Ave Science Fair was held on the evening of May 16. The National Elementary Honor Society induction will be held on May 22, and Grade Five students will participate in Dare graduation on May 24. At school 24, they celebrated autism awareness and acceptance all through the month of April. Students and staff participated by blowing bubbles. Spirit Week was held April 3 through 17. They celebrated Teacher Appreciation Week May 8 through 12, as well as Police Week May 16 through 20. At school 27, they celebrated a Neurodiversity Awareness Spirit Week culminating with their Bubbles for Autism event. Student council held a campus cleanup. Students participated in various events to celebrate Autism Acceptance Month. And tonight, the National Elementary Honor Society induction ceremony will be held there. The spring concert was held last night, May 17, and the DEI showcase presentation they have, their community-based project called Funds for Fund, their Family STEM Night, were taking place all throughout the month. At Colonial Middle School, three students, Isabella de Silva, Shane La Pietra, and Joseph Massimino, were awarded with the National Junior Honor Society Outstanding Achievement Award. Each recipient received a $500 college savings plan to support their educational aspirations. Finally, Colonial High School, they hosted students from Woodbridge High School, JFK High School, Colonial Middle School, and Avonel Middle School at the Second Day of Dialogue in April. The National Honor Society volunteered and made a donation to the Woodbridge Animal Shelter. As well, they participated in the Colonial Cleanup and in the POAC Autism Walk. Tomorrow's teachers celebrated Teacher Appreciation Week and Administrative Assistance Day. Tomorrow's teachers as well will adopt a summer classroom at Lingcrest School. Interact Club and student council distributed crumble cookies on Teacher Appreciation Day. The musical All Shook Up received 15 nominations at the Marquee Awards presented by the Carteret Performing Arts Center on May 17. The CHS baseball team went to school nine to work on a cooperative STEM learning origami project. Their ecology club had a litter cleanup on April 18 and 26. Colonial is proud to introduce the chess club with 25 new members. The Spanish Honor Society inducted 103 new members this year. And finally, the admin team celebrated Teacher Appreciation Week with a tropical theme. Thank you all so much for the opportunity.
Thank you, Alyssa, for your detailed report. You know, you're more than welcome to join us today, but if you have to leave for homework or anything, we totally understand.
I would love to. I actually have a rehearsal for a fundraising gala that will be held tomorrow at 7:00.
Well, thank you.
So, I have to get there now.
Best of luck.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And the Board would also like to thank Mr. Ramos from Colonial High School for taking time out of his busy schedule to be here tonight. The Woodbridge Township Board of Education welcomes and encourages active, productive, and respectful participation by members of the public, and seeks to protect the First Amendment rights of those who engage in the exercise of free speech at this Board of Education meeting. Members of the public are requested to express themselves in a civil manner with due respect for the dignity and privacy of those whose legal rights may be impacted. The public is now invited to speak regarding the agendas being presented this evening. When you come to the microphone, please provide your name and the section of township in which you reside, along with the specific agenda item and number you wish to discuss. As per Regulation 1100D, comments must be limited to no more than five minutes. No response will be given until you've completed your opportunity to speak.
Tom Maris, Ford's, New Jersey. We're talking about the agenda. Point number seven, G Personnel, which I think is a separate handout this evening, which is addressing various salary components. In looking through that, I noticed that a lot of the salaries are very consistent across the board, and yet when we get into the, if you will, the bus drivers, that can range from approximately $27 an hour up to almost $42 an hour. Why is the discrepancy so high in that, or the pay variant for bus drivers, so diverse? And yet, for many of the other items that you have listed, the salaries seem to be much the same on an hourly rate. Can you explain that, please?
Mr. Maris, real quick, what agenda item was that?
I'm sorry. Seven, Personnel, and then you have a separate handout on Personnel. Because I didn't see it in this packet.
Mr. President?
Are you, you're talking page 12, right? So, that would be under Agenda Item Number 27.
Okay.
I thought you said Item 7. I'm sorry.
Well, yeah.
Do you have any other questions on agenda? We'll go back, or?
That's just on the agenda. That's all I have for the agenda. Thank you.
Okay. Dr. Massimino, due to Chair to Mr. Wolferman?
Mr. Maris, the reason we have discrepancy on the bus drivers is it's a negotiated contract in length of time, so a bus driver who's been here longer will get a higher rate than a newly hired bus driver. So, it's all negotiated.
And how do you compare that? I mean, what's your basis of that? Do you compare it to other school districts? Is there a set thing with the state mandates? This is your own negotiated contracts?
It's a union negotiation with the Board.
So, it's union-driven?
It's a negotiation between the union and the Board.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Wolferman? Or, to the Chair? I think a lot of the numbers differ, you know, on the range from 24 into the 40s based on the longevity of the employee, right? You know?
Right.
I just wanted to make sure that that was clear, that obviously someone on the lower pay scale has been with us for a shorter period of time, and someone on the higher end has been with us for a longer period of time.
Very similar to a fifth-year teacher is going to make less money than a 10th-year teacher.
Correct.
That's basically the salary guide that drives that. Is there anybody else about the agenda items? Seeing none? Superintendent's agenda, Dr. Massimino.
Mr. President, I have 15 items to present to the Board.
I make a motion to move the superintendent's agenda. I have a motion by Mr. Treeblosser. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Perez. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
I abstain on item number seven in the name of Marie Anderson. Yes on all other items.
Mr. De La Pietro.
I abstain on item number seven in the name of Frank De La Pietro. Yes on all other items.
Mr. Harris.
I vote yes on all items except number seven, where I'll be abstaining in the name of Daniel Harris for attendance, along with the other Board members for a conference, just so the public's aware.
Ms. Perez.
I also abstain on item number seven in the name of Jenny Perez. Yes to all other items.
Mr. Sedana.
I abstain on item number seven in the name of Akshar A.J. Sedana. Yes on all other items, please.
Mr. Treeblosser.
I abstain on item seven in the name of Jonathan Treeblosser. Yes on all other items.
Mr. Velez.
I abstain on item number seven in the name of Joseph Velez. Yes on all other items.
And Mr. Molnar.
On item number seven, I'll be abstaining in the name of Brian Molnar. Yes on all other items. Policy and Planning Agenda, Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Policy and Planning Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools presents the following two items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. Harris. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. De La Pietro. Are there any comments or questions from the Board?
Mr. President?
Mr. Harris?
I just want to recognize item number two. Item number one was mentioned last time, recognizing Ms. Anderson and her team, but item number two, this happened following, or during, our last Board meeting. It was the special prom, a special education prom that's put on annually by Ms. Huber and Mr. McCabe. I had the good fortune of being able to run over there after our last Board meeting. They did a wonderful job, as always. It's a special education prom for students between the ages, excuse me, the grades of six and 12, students whose IEPs, you know, suggest that they wouldn't, you know, that perhaps a different place for a prom is more appropriate to be accompanied by ages. It's a wonderful program. I just want to recognize that. I'm sure Ms. Bourdan, had she been here this evening, she would have recognized them. So, to Mr. McCabe and Ms. Huber, thank you to you and your team on a great, great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Any other comments from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Treeblosser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Mr. Molnar.
Yes. Curriculum Agenda, Mr. Treeblosser.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Curriculum Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction presents the following one item. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Thank you, Mr. Treeblosser. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Anderson. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Seeing none? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Treeblosser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
And Mr. Molnar.
Yes. Finance and Insurance, Mr. Treeblosser.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Finance and Insurance Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary presents the following 20 items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Thank you. Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Harris. Any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Treeblosser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Mr. Molnar.
Yes. Transportation Agenda, Mr. De La Pietro.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Transportation Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary presents the following five items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Thank you. I have a motion by Mr. Harris. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Perez. Any comments or questions from the Board? Seeing none? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Treeblosser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
And Mr. Molnar.
Yes. Transportation Agenda, Mr. De La Pietro.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Transportation Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Board Administrator Board Secretary presents the following nine items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Thank you. Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Sedana. Any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Treeblosser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Mr. Molnar.
Yes. Cafeteria Agenda, Ms. Perez.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Cafeteria Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary presents the following one item. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Thank you. Have a motion by Ms. Perez. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. De La Pietro. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Treeblosser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
And Mr. Molnar.
Yes. Personnel Agenda, Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Personnel Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources presents the following 36 items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Thank you. I have a motion by Mr. Harris. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Sedana. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Any extensions?
Yes. I'll be abstaining on item number 14 under the name Brian Jeffroy. Yes on all other items.
Mr. Treeblosser.
I will be abstaining on item 14 in the name of Brian Jeffroy. Yes on all other items.
And Mr. Velez?
I will be abstaining on item number 14 in the name of Brian Jeffroy. Yes on all other items.
And Mr. Molnar.
Item 14, yes on all items. Mr. Bush, do you have any recommendations this evening?
No, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any old business that should be brought before the attention of the Board? Is there any new business?
Mr. President?
I noticed you have your notebook open.
Yeah, I got the notebook. There's just one item this evening. Just want to thank Mr. Passerino and the rest of the administration and our guidance counselors at our high school level. Annually, the Construction Industry Career Day takes place in Raridan Center at the New Jersey Exposition Center. There's a day for parents, college graduates, and, you know, children to go and learn about the construction trades, from the carpenters, the contractors, operating engineers, laborers, and so on and so forth, to hands-on experience, teaching, you know, young people about the professions in the construction industry. And then the following day, there's an opportunity during the school day for school districts to take by bus students off to the career day to learn about, once again, the career, the construction industry. Our three high schools are taking interested students off to Raridan Center to check out those professions. I think it's always important that we expose our students to all the myriad of different career opportunities out there. Sometimes, you know, there's just professions that children never think of, and I want to thank Mr. Passerino and the rest of your team for putting that together, exposing our students to all the wonderful careers that await them when they graduate. So, thank you. And that's it for me, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Mr. Sedana.
I'd just like to take a minute and recognize, Mr. Ali's not here, but Mr. Ali's been coordinating the DEI showcase for our district, and next week, on the 25th, there's a cultural, I guess, get-together at the Woodbridge Community Center in the evening, and I just want to take some names and thank these teachers and the principals, vice principals, the administration for making it all happen. I've been working with these teachers, Ms. Perosi at JFK Memorial, Ms. Veaglia, Ms. Popino. They're both working together, Woodbridge Middle School and Colonial Middle School, Ms. Acosta at Ford's Middle School, Ms. Madden at Avonel Middle School, and Ms. Johal at Woodbridge High School. These are the teachers that have worked with me personally, and they're great to work for and work with, and I'd like to also thank the principals and vice principals of the buildings to make it happen. If I keep reading names, I'm going to list a lot of people. So, in the interest of time, I just want to recognize these wonderful staff members. I'd like to appreciate and give my note of gratitude to the administration, to the DEI Committee, and everything that they're doing to expose our students to different cultures, different activities, and the diversity in the district that is within Woodbridge. So, thank you for that, and I truly appreciate the opportunity to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Sedana. Ms. Anderson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to take a moment to share some information about a great program that's sponsored by the Woodbridge Township Youth Services. So, the Occasia Youth Center in Port Reading will be open this summer. It's going to be open to all the Woodbridge Township students that are entering sixth grade to eighth grade. It'll be open between Monday, June 26, to Friday, August 4. The hours will be 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and that's Monday through Friday. So, if you want more information, you can email youthservices@tpw woodbridge.nda.us or you can call 732-726-6290. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other new business? Seeing none, we will now open this meeting for the public comment. If you wish to say something, please come to the microphone, provide your name and the partisan town where you live. Again, members of the public are requested to express themselves in a civil manner with due respect for the dignity and privacy of those whose legal rights may be impacted. Please limit your comments to no more than five minutes in accordance with Regulation 1100D. No response will be given until you've had your full five minutes to ask your questions or comments.
Good evening. Tom Maris, Ford's, New Jersey. Just take a moment to thank Mr. Passamino and the school board, in fact, school district, for promoting the crafts. As someone who spent 30-some-odd years in the engineering and construction business, and prior to that as an apprentice with different corporations in different trades, I can tell you there's a crying need, and it's a wonderful path, and I think I've said this over the years, for children to look at as far as an educational alternative. Liberal arts degrees are great, any degree is great, but this nation has a crying need for that type of people. We need more craftsmen. I can tell you I am working with the majority of the people there are not native-born. They migrated here, they're working on their citizenship, and they are hard-working, conscientious people, but we need more, not only in the crafts, but in engineering and construction areas as well. But I'm digressing for a moment. My real questions tonight are directed specifically to Mr. Molnar as the president of the council and Dr. Massimino as the superintendent of schools, and I would greatly appreciate it, and I'm asking you, not our attorney, your attorney, to please give your respective position as within, positions within the school district, an explanation as to what a male and what a female is. The second part of that is, how many genders are there? Not gender identities, but rather clinical genders. Third, how is the district teaching children about clinical genders vis-à-vis those who elect to identify as something other than male or female? Those are my questions. Thank you.
So, Mr. Maris, I'll answer the questions that I'm going to answer. We teach according to the state curriculum in terms of what we teach students. I mean, that's, I hate to give you the answer we've given you before, but that's the fact. That's the reality of what we do. You know, I'm not going to engage in personal opinion, which is what you're asking me. You're not asking me a question that's specifically to Mr. Molnar and I, which is fine, and I respect it, but in that vein, and we've had enough discussion on this, we teach children according to the state curriculum.
And I'm just going to kind of dethrone that. We teach what the state curriculum is, what my opinion is, could be different than anybody else on this dais. It's my opinion, it's your opinion, you've made your opinion very well-known, and I'm just going to leave it at that.
So, the state therefore defines what a male and female is. You don't, and you're teaching whatever they tell you to teach. That's what you just said. Thank you. Thank you.
I have a question. You say you have to teach the curriculum that the state gives you. My question is, isn't it true that there are districts around the state that are not teaching the new guidelines as of the comprehensive health and biz ed standards of 2020? That they are resisting that? That I've heard also that the worst consequence of not teaching second graders or by second grade about gender identity and gender as a choice, that in fact, the worst that could happen is your CUSAC score may be affected because you're not fully complying with everything they expect to see if they ever inspect what you're teaching in health. So, first question is regarding what are the worst consequences by just saying no to the state? Second question is, I've not really spoken, I've been here for over a year, but I haven't really spoken to my faith, and my belief and my opinion is born in my belief as a Christian that God created the heavens and the earth. He created them male and female. I believe there is a range of masculinity and femininity. There are in a male, a whole range of masculinity and femininity, as in female. And there are range of sexual preferences. This is what I grew up understanding, and this is what I believe. To say that that is equivalent to gender identities, and I've heard the number upwards of seventy or more, it's just not what I believe. And it's not a matter... When I say my opinion is born out of my Christian faith, I mean, I also have a lot of evidence. I can point out based on presentation who the females in the room are, who the males in the room are. And if their thought process is different, that doesn't change the reality, the fact, or the biology, or the chromosomes. And any course of puberty blockers, which by the way, the ACLU has condemned the use of puberty blockers with sex offenders as cruel and unusual, and yet it seems the schools are now willing to experiment on the children with the off-label use of puberty blockers, meaning they're only supposed to be used for a short time for early onset puberty or for certain cancers, not for extended use while a child whose brain is underdeveloped decides what gender they are. My last question is this: if a parent abused their children in any way, the state would step in and take them away from the parent. But if the state is the abuser, as it turns out, of the child by confusing them early on about what their true gender is and having quote-unquote "experts" who are all about the affirmation model that has been discredited in Europe, does that open things up for you guys to be sued personally? Because if you look at the studies that are out there and the studies that have quote-unquote "proven" that gender-affirming therapy is actually therapeutic and not damaging, and that those studies have been debunked, and that information was available to you, would you be liable to lawsuit? And actually, I said last question. Bill number, Senate Bill thirty-five ninety-two is actually trying to make it criminal for a parent to intervene on these quote-unquote "experts" affirming the child. If the parent does not allow the child to proceed with gender affirmation, that state can have emergency powers to take the child away. I'd like to know where you guys, you know, as parents and human beings, where you would stand on that.
Mr. Bush, would you like the litigation part?
Yeah, I'm not going to engage in, you know, personal opinions of board members. I mean, this Board of Education, we've gone through this, guys, I mean, over the last year and more maybe, on a lot of these issues, and we've gone in circles, and you've heard our position, you clearly don't like it, we've heard yours. Our position is not one of opinion, it's one of compliance as a Board of Education. We are not an avenue for protest. We are educators. We're responsible for educating kids in compliance with the statutes and the regulations of the state of New Jersey. We cannot be sued for following the law. We're following the law, following the requirements, and it's this Board's responsibility to have an opinion in the areas that we are open to having an opinion, and it's our responsibility to follow the rules as are given to us by the state of New Jersey. And we're going to continue to do that. And our answer is going to be, maybe frustrating for you because we keep saying the same thing, but your questions are frankly, I think, asking the same question, just different ways each week.
I'm asking about the CUSAC being the only consequence. There's a lot of other districts that have just said no to the state. My question has not been answered yet. What are the consequences? And you do have the right to say no to these guidelines. And there is a CUSAC consequence, which would be very minimal.
We do not. Thank you.
Do not what?
We do not have the right to say no to the state of New Jersey with respect to those matters within the education curriculum.
Okay.
We do not have that right.
Thank you for going on record to say that. Appreciate it.
Mr. Molnar?
The chair.
Mr. Vice President?
To the chair and perhaps Dr. Massimino and Mr. Bush can answer this. It was just suggested that schools experiment with puberty blockers. To me, that would be something that would come from a medical doctor regarding a child's personal health. Do we in any way weigh in on what types of medication children should take?
I mean, maybe I'm missing something. Do we have a laboratory in our schools, like in a back room? Because it kind of, some comments from the public kind of seem like we take these kids and we do experiments on them.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I'm looking to debunk any suggestion that there's experimentation going on regarding children and medication. Mr. Bush, could you speak to that?
Yeah, the answer is, there's absolutely, we've never administered, excuse me, sir.
Mr. Lund, you had your time to talk.
We know your passion. We give you a time to talk every single meeting we have, and we appreciate and respect that time.
You had your time to talk.
You have an opportunity to speak, and we hear you every time. But now it's our time, and it's our meeting. So, anybody else in the public who'd like to speak?
John Wadari-Goodrich. That's good. Question would be, you say you cannot be sued if you obey the law. Can you be sued if you don't obey the law? Number one, let's count to meeting, Mayor McCormick said that one oh seven Road Street over here property did houses bought. And I would like to know, did school board bought it because it's right next to your parking lot over here, or did the township bought it? Number two would be, on the James Street, the repair shop, two houses, that's one is bought, I've been to us in negotiation, they all want parking lot. And would be shared by the three different, by school board, it'd be shared by the people on the seat on Main Street, and it would be sued by the, wherever it is, the public. It should be only one parking lot, there'll be no fence in between. My question would be, you people at the school board should kind of have a first preference, because first of all, you deal with the kids, the parents should be able to bring the kids to school or wait for the kids. Instead, somebody has parked the cars, you'll be someplace God knows where. And my two thing would be that, why do we taking back seat to anybody? Because schools are most important, kids are most important, and that would my objection to be all this thing be joint parking lot. If it's a school parking lot, it should be school parking lot. If it's seat parking, it should be seat parking lot. But you cannot accept somebody's going to come and maybe park the car, take the train, maybe right next to the school over here, and I don't know why do you people take bull by the horns, and you tell them what you want, and instead tell you what they're going to do. And let me go back twenty-one, twenty-two, I asked Dr. Zager, what's the population of students in Woodbridge schools? And, which is very unusual, the answer gave it's north of thirteen thousand. At first, I didn't know what he meant by it, but I didn't think that any teacher or anybody should get kind of an answer. Then I asked Dr. Massimino, last year, twenty-two, twenty-three year, he says it's north of fourteen thousand. Why are you afraid to tell people the exact, I don't say exact, but ballpark, not ballpark, closest to the now, but you know how many students are in the school? We knew it when they started building those apartments, at least I knew it, most of us. You will have a problem with the school kids. We've got a lot of population, this kids over here. You've got very well north of fifteen thousand kids in Woodbridge Township schools. Why are denying it? You should, people should know. You press them to build more schools, you need more schools, you need more classrooms, you need more teachers, again. And let those guys downtown, not your responsibility, it's their responsibility, they created the thing. You owe a thousand kids more than you admitted you got it. Why are you afraid to tell them? Tell the people. People love to know the truth. They're complaining, everything. But you people cover those, for those people down on Main Street, I don't think you should do this. But tell the parents, tell the public what's going on. People would not object schools. People would not object a good education. But don't try to mislead the people, and then that's a problem. That's a problem that we do not, who are we afraid of? You are the most important people, not the mayor, not our schools are most important thing to our people. Kids are our future. Without them, you close the books and blew the town. But again, why all those years you admit, you're denying that it's not a problem with our schools are over too many kids, not in our schools? And then you try to build the schools after you got thousand kids more, that's five schools according to the number of kids in schools. So, again, stand up. You got elected like they did. You got more power than they do, except they call it tax money, you don't. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Massimino, would you like to give Mr. Vitarik our exact number of students in the district?
Let me be clear, there's never a fear, to be honest.
What is it?
There's never a fear, to be honest.
Mr. Vitarik, your five minutes is up. We'll answer your questions, but we're not going to go back and forth.
Thank you.
When you spoke, you said I said it was north of fourteen thousand. That's correct. The enrollment changes daily. So, if you wanted an exact number, that number would change every day. So, today that number is fourteen thousand four hundred and thirty, based on the running of this report that I just ran.
You sure?
Am I sure?
Mr. Vitarik.
Of the report I just ran?
The numbers that are coming in are from Genesis, which tabulates our students. You wanted the number, we're giving you the number.
As far as the parking goes, Mr. Vitarik, it's not a matter of mine, or theirs, or yours, or his, hers. It's a matter of what's safest. So, it's not something I look at, and the mayor looks at, and we make a decision. It's something we have engineers look at, architects, law enforcement, because the idea is to get students off buses and into schools safe, and have them leave schools, get on buses and in cars safely. So, the work that we're doing, and I know you're going to characterize any partnership as them telling us what to do and taking the bull by the horns. Sometimes partnerships work because both parties contribute input, and you find the common goal. In this particular case, the common goal is finding the best way to get students in and out of Rush Street safely. I watch that happen every day. I watch it happen every day. So, I do know what it looks like. And we've had police officers, engineers, architects go out there to also do assessments and studies so that we have a better understanding of what is the best way to proceed. I'm not a traffic expert, so I'm relying upon them to tell me there's a better way to do something. So, I think it's a mischaracterization to say that they're telling us what to do in the parking. The teachers will absolutely have first crack at it, and there will be signage that indicates that accordingly. We're not going to do something that isn't beneficial to our staff, or our parents, or our students that would be contrary to our mission. So, I would ask you to have a little faith. When I give you a number from a report that I'm running, and you're asking me if I'm sure, I don't know if you're questioning the system or my integrity, but they're both spot-on.
Thank you.
To the chair.
Mr. Harris?
Could I just jump in to augment what Dr. Massimino said? There was a time when we debated these numbers a little bit, and I'll tell you why. I always used to cite the number of students around thirteen thousand seven hundred. That number fluctuates, because those are the numbers of students who attend our buildings, our twenty-five buildings, whereas we have several hundred students who are residents of Woodbridge Township, who are our students, but they attend vocational technical schools, they attend charter schools out of district. We don't have any charters in Woodbridge Township. And then we have students who qualify for special education services in private special education schools outside of our district as well. So, the number that Dr. Massimino cited for you is the number of, the total number of students that we are responsible for. And then there's a quote-unquote lesser number of the students who attend our buildings. So, that's why sometimes it sounded like there was a disparity between thirteen thousand seven hundred and fourteen thousand four hundred. It's just, that's the reality of those two numbers.
And, excuse me, sir, to piggyback on that, so the number I gave you also includes our pre-registration. So, it's including the kids that are coming into kindergarten, right? So, we're including K to twelve, and in this report, it includes the students that are coming in. So, we're not doing just a snapshot of the students in the building to Mr. Harris's point. We're looking at the students that do go outside of the district and that technically are pre-K because they're in our pre-registration. They will be our students come September, but they're not in our school right now.
Just to kind of put the attendance into kind of perspective, when I graduated Woodbridge High School in nineteen eighty-two, I think our graduating class was north of six hundred graduates in the class of eighty-two. When my daughter graduated Woodbridge High School in two thousand twenty, her graduating class was three hundred twenty. So, I think if you go back and you look at Woodbridge in the early eighties and late seventies, you're going to see enrollment was at a lot more than it is now. I know everyone seems to think our schools are overcrowded in classrooms, but you'd be surprised if you go back. There used to be a brochure from, I forgot what year it was, it was like nineteen seventy-two. And it's kind of funny to look at those numbers and go through all those schools, and that was with the school on King George Road, that was with the Hope Lawn School, you know, there were more schools too. So, that's just a little perspective, just on my end, from nineteen eighty-two to two thousand twenty. One thing about the two parties working together, I know a couple of months ago, we were scared that we were going to build apartments right next to a school, and the two parties worked together and came up what was best for the students. If it's either going to be a parking lot or an apartment complex, I'm going to take the parking lot. We can live with that, and we'll make that safe. So, you know, working together, you know, goes both ways. Is there any other members of the public who'd like to speak?
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Vikrant Kayquad. I'm resident of Island. I'm here representing HSS. On occasion of Teachers Appreciation Week on May eleventh, twenty twenty-three, HSS Woodbridge Chapter conducted Guru Vandana Utsav, or the Teachers Appreciation Event, to honor and celebrate our teachers and educators. The event was held at Kid Keep Well Camp in Edison from six p.m. to seven-thirty p.m. Quick background on HSS. HSS, or Hindu Swamshak Sangh, is a nonprofit, five-owned, three-C organization with two thirty-five branches, with one sixty-four, in one sixty-four cities and thirty-four states. HSS fosters a sense of civic duty, care for community, responsibility, voluntarism, and an understanding of selfless service through activities and outreach programs such as food donation drives, we call it Seva Diwali, or community yoga programs like the Open Yoga that we are doing with Library, or Health for Humanity yoga thons. Devotional worship of the guru or the teacher is one of the most touching and elevating traditions of Hinduism, which has been practiced for generations. Teachers inspire us to become better individuals and contribute positively to the society. This year's event was attended by Woodbridge Township Mayor, Mr. John McCormick, Woodbridge Human Rights Commission Chair, Mr. Glenn Morgan, Woodbridge Township Superintendent, Dr. Joseph Massimino, and Woodbridge Township School District DIA Director, Mr. Kendall Ali, along with, most importantly, twenty-five teachers and their families from Woodbridge and Edison School District. So, it was not just for Woodbridge, but also Edison School District. The event started with a pledge of allegiance, followed by a traditional lamp lighting ceremony and prayer to Lord Ganesha. The students then gave delightful music performance, which was followed by an informal presentation on Purva Paksha, a traditional Indian technique which focuses on art of winning arguments and... a traditional Indian technique which focuses on art of winning arguments and debates. I'm sure we knew quite a few of those in this time. This was followed by a Teachers Appreciation Ceremony where students took opportunity to express their gratitude and reverence towards their teachers. The event concluded with delicious dinner, consisting of several mouth-watering Indian vegetable dishes. All in all, we had a successful Teachers Appreciation Event this year. We thank all the teachers, Board of Education, and the mayor for their continued support, and are looking forward to working with all of you to make our school district more inclusive. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the public? Seeing none, I'd like to thank everybody who came to the microphone tonight to state your questions and concerns. The chair will now entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, a motion.
Got a motion, do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.